All right, if we could all please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call this meeting to order at seven o'clock PM. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Von Kruks?
Here.
Benedetti?
Present.
Cabo Watten?
Present.
Hornbeck?
Here.
Prueji?
Here.
Rodriguez?
Here.
Rezepa?
Here.
Forum President, Mayor Rezepa.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next item we have is the minimum approval of the April 1st, 2024 regular meeting.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Thank you. Next up here, under Presentations and Proclamations, I've got a proclamation for you all for Workers Memorial Day. Whereas every year on April 28th, communities and work sites around the world honor friends, family members, and colleagues who have been killed or injured on the job. Whereas in 2022, the Federal Bureau of Labor Statistics estimated that 5,486 workers were killed by traumatic injuries on the job, a 5.7% increase from 2021. On average, a worker died nearly nine, every 96 minutes from a work-related injury in 2022. Whereas in 2022, 139 workers' lives were lost through fatal workplace accidents in Michigan. Whereas it is appropriate to honor the memory of the courageous and dedicated members of Michigan's labor force who have been injured or disabled or have died as a result of workplace accidents. And whereas we remember those who have died in workplace catastrophes, suffered occupational-related diseases, or have been injured due to dangerous conditions. Whereas recognition of the integrity of Michigan's workforce and its achievements on behalf of the economic growth of our state is necessary. And whereas the City of Trenton wishes to pay tribute to the workers who have died or been injured or disabled in workplace accidents, we honor the contributions of Michigan's workforce and call for increased workplace safety. The City of Trenton renews our efforts to seek stronger workplace safety and health protections, better standards in enforcement, and fair and just compensation. And we rededicate ourselves to improving safety and health in every city workplace. Therefore, I, Stephen Rezepa, Mayor of the City of Trenton, by virtue of the power vested in me under the Charter of the City, hereby proclaim April 28th, 2024, as Workers Memorial Day in the City of Trenton and urge all citizens to recognize and honor the contributions of Michigan's workforce and call for increased safety standards. I would get a motion to accept.
So moved.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered. Thank you. All right, next up, we have public comment regarding items on today's agenda. This portion of public comment, we have reserved exclusively for items on the agenda. And we'll have another opportunity for all public comment at the close of the meeting. As anyone wishing to speak begins with their name and address, directs all questions through me, and please limit their comment to five minutes. Seeing none, we'll move right on along then. All right, department heads and officials. So the first thing I have for you all tonight was an agenda item for me here, resolution submitting the fire, police, and municipal building improvement bond proposal. I'm asking for this body's approval on this resolution, which I'll read, that would submit this bond proposal in language to the ballot, hopefully for August, for the City of Trenton voters to decide here. Let me get this pulled up here. So I'm gonna, again, I really wanted to read resolutions today, so we'll get started here. And this is again exactly what we had, oh, thank you, Debbie, what we had discussed at previous study sessions and laid out a little bit more visually, so folks understand what we're looking at here. But whereas the City Council of the City of Trenton, County of Wayne, Michigan, has determined that it is necessary for the health, safety, and welfare of the city and its residents and property owners that the city acquire, construct, furnish, and equip a new police station and a new fire station, and remodel, reconstruct, renovate, furnish, and equip existing municipal buildings in the city, both including energy conserv- conservation components, interests in land, site improvements, and parking improvements, together with the rights of way, appurtenances and attachments thereto, and demolition of existing buildings. And whereas the City Council has determined that the city should borrow money in an amount not to exceed $43,500,000 and issue general obligation unlimited tax bonds of the city in such amount, in one or more series, for the purpose of paying all or part of the cost of the project. And whereas the City Council is determined that a proposal to issue bonds for the project shall be submitted to the qualified electors of the City of Trenton at an election to be held in the city on Tuesday, August 6th, 2024. And whereas, in order for the bond proposal to be submitted to the city's electors on the election date, it is necessary for the City Council to certify the ballot wording of the proposal of the city clerk and the county clerk of Wayne County, Michigan, as required by Act 116, Public Act of Michigan, 1954. Now therefore, be it resolved that the bond proposal attached to this resolution at Exhibit A shall be submitted to a vote of the qualified of elector- electors of the city on the election date. The ballot wording of the bond proposal is hereby certified to the city clerk and the county clerk of Wayne for submission to the city's electors on the election date. The city clerk is hereby authorized and directed to file this resolution and/or complete any such forms, certificates, or documents, as may be required by the county clerk, to evidence the foregoing certification and/or submission by no later than May 14th, 2024. The city clerk and the county clerk are hereby directed to post and publish notice of the last day of registration and notice of election, as required by Michigan election law, and if prepared and printed as provided by Michigan election law, ballots for submitting the bond proposal at the election, which ballots shall contain the proposal appearing at Exhibit A, or the proposition shall be stated as a proposal on the voting machines, which ballots may be, may include other matters presented to the electorate on the same date. The estimated first-year millage rate and the simple average annual millage rate set forth in the bond proposal, which have been prepared by the city's financial advisor, Ben Zinsky and Company, are hereby determined to be reasonable estimates of such millage rates based on current assumptions. The city makes the following declarations for the purpose of complying with the reimbursement rules of Treasury Regulation 1.150-2 pursuant to the Internal Revenue Code of 1986 as amended. If the ballot proposal is approved by the electors, the city reasonably expects to reimburse itself with the proceeds of the bonds for, for certain costs of the projects that were or will be paid from available funds of the city subsequently to 60 days prior to today. The maximum principal amount of debt expected to be issued for the projects is $43.5 million. The expenditures described above are capital expenditures as defined by Treasury Regulation 1.150-1B, which are any costs of a type which are properly chargeable to a capital account or would be so chargeable with a proper election or with the application of the definition of, and placed in service under Treasury Regulation 1.150-2C under general federal income tax principles. All resolution, parts of the resolution insofar as they conflict with the provisions of this resolution should be the same and are hereby rescinded, adopted, approved. And then reading into here, the actual Exhibit A, so what the ballot and language will read to folks on the August ballot, or we'll start receiving those via absentee ballot in June. Shall this Exhibit A, Fire, Police, and Municipal Building Improvement Bond Proposal. Shall the City of Trenton, County of Wayne, Michigan, borrow the principal sum of not to exceed $43,500,000 and issue its general obligation unlimited tax bonds in one or more series payable in not to exceed 30 years from the date of the issue of each of the series, for the purpose of paying the costs of acquiring, constructing, furnishing, and equipping a new police station and a new fire station, and remodeling, reconstructing, renovating, furnishing, and equipping existing municipal buildings, both including energy conservation components, interests in land, site improvements, and parking improvements, together with rights of way, appurtenances and attachments thereto, and demolition of existing buildings. Yes or no? And then if approved, the estimated millage to be levied in 2025 is 2.7890 mils, and estimate, an estimated simple average annual millage rate required to retire the bonds is 2.7746 mils. So, all that to be say, that is the language that will appear on the ballot for our bond that we're gonna be seeking for our police, fire, and municipal building overall here, overhaul here. I know that we've talked about it in a couple of study sessions here, and folks will certainly be getting more information from us on it over the next series of council meetings, and then certainly with other informational materials to boot. So with that, defer to this body for their approval.
So moved.
Support.
Right, moved and supported. Any further discussion?
Okay, we'll do it as a roll call vote, too, just to be certain here. Benedetti?
Yes.
Cabo Watten?
Yes.
Hornbeck?
Yes.
Prueji?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Rezepa?
Yes.
Von Kruks?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mayor Rezepa.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and certainly thank you all for your concurrence there. Next up, we have a couple of items from our city controller, first up being the budget amendments for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2024.
Ms. Cooper?
Thank you, good evening. So in with your documentation was a list of budget amendments I would like to make for the quarter ending March 31st. Most items are just shifting between line items within a department. The only fund balance was pulled from the fire, fire replacement funds for the ambulance and truck that were purchased earlier this year. So just looking to approve the budget amendments for March 30th.
So moved. Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Thank you, Jill. Next, we have PA 202, Fiscal Year 2023 Determination of Underfunded Status and Incorrective Action Letter.
Yes, so a couple of weeks ago, I received the letter, an annual letter that we received just stating that our OPEB fund is still in underfunded status, underfunded, underfunded is 40% or, or lower. So we're currently sitting at 36.3% funded. So back in 2017, we got entered into a corrective action plan where we were contributing an extra $50,000 a year, so we've continued to budget that $50,000. So just looking to receive and place on file the PA 202 for fiscal year 2023 Determination of Underfunded Status and Incorrective Action Letter.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. And then lastly, reschedule the public hearing of Monday, May 20th, 2024 to Monday, May 6th, 2024, for the proposed fiscal year 2024-25 budget.
Yep, so at the last meeting, we approved the public hearing to be held on May 15th, but we would like to move that forward to May 6th at 6:30. So just looking for a motion to reschedule the public hearing regarding the fiscal year 2025 proposed city budget to Monday, May 6th, 2024 at 6:30 PM.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jill. All right, next up from our fire chief, Chief Anderson, renewal of the annual services contract with Herkimer Radio.
Good evening. Before you have a proposal for approval of a renewal for our service contract with Herkimer Radio, I've had this same contract, no increases or changes, for many years now. Due to the strong working relationship we have with Herkimer, as well as their working relationship with the DMA, DCC for, for radio issues, I am requesting your body's approval for the renewal that is budgeted for $4,338.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Thanks, Chief. All right, we've got two items now from our Parks and Recreation Director, Mr. Beaker. First up, we have the 2024 Summer Festival Beverage Operator.
Thank you, Mayor. The Trenton Summer Festival Committee sent a request for proposals to eligible Trenton civic organizations to operate the beverage tent at this year's festival. Proposals were sent to the Trenton Band Boosters, Trenton Touchdown Club, Trenton Hockey Association, Trenton Firefighter Charities, Trenton Rotary Club, St. Joseph Athletic Club, and Trenton Baseball Association. Proposals were received from only one organization, the St. Joe's Athletic Club. The proposal was reviewed by the festival committee using the set criteria. Based on the proposal evaluation process, the festival committee voted to award the 2024 beverage vendor to the St. Joe's Athletic Club. The State of Michigan Liquor Control Commission requires a letter of consent from the City of Trenton for the St. Joe's Athletic Club to operate the beer tent in the street during the Trenton Summer Festival, June 28th, 29th, 30th, 2024. A motion to that effect is greatly appreciated.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Thank you, Tim. Next up, we've got the 2024 Fireworks Contract.
Attached for your consideration is a contract with Ace Pyro in the amount of 55,000 for the 2024 fireworks celebration to be held on June 29th, 2024, with a rain date of June 30th, 2024. Acceptance, acceptance of this contract requires waiving the normal bidding process in the best interest of the city, as is the contractor that we have previously worked with and has provided an excellent product and professional service. Along with the contract approval request, I am also requesting approval to permit the 2024 fireworks display to be held on June 29th, 2024, with a rain date of June 30th, 2024. The barge will be moved south in the water towards the foot of West Road, since Rotary Park will be under construction during this time. Patrons will be able to view the fireworks from the festival stage area and surrounding parks. Your concurrence is greatly appreciated.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Thanks, Tim.
Thank you.
All right, we've got two items from Chief Hawkins here at the Police Department, first up being the renewal and upgrade of the Equiture recording software.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, before you is the renewal of the contract with Equiture. It's for the services of our recording software for station telephone lines. This is a 10-year agreement, which includes upgraded service to IP-based phones and upgraded hardware. Money was set aside in the current budget of computer equipment, software, maintenance. What I'm requesting is approval of the contract with Equiture for 10 years. The first year costs $6,938.90, and subsequent years, 2 through 10, at $5,438.90.
So moved.
Support.
Move and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Thank you, Chief. Next up, dispatch area renovation.
The next request before you is with the move to central dispatch, it was imperatively provided the public with a 24-hour police employee at the front counter. Now, the scope of this work reorganized our traffic bureau, records bureau, and command officer locations in the station. All jail and station monitoring was moved back to the front window, information window for 24/7 coverage by a command officer. Our traffic bureau and records bureau was moved to the old dispatch room for easier access to the public. Certified alarm was the vendor who installed the original equipment and wiring and came on an immediate request. What I'm requesting for you is move to approve the invoice to certified alarm for the listed work for a total of $5,575.10 through the contractual services line item.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. All right, next up, we have from Mayor Protem Benedetti, we have a close session request.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to cancel scheduled study session for April 15th, 2024, and instead hold a closed study session immediately following this regular meeting for the purpose of discussing litigation, a potential sale of property.
So moved.
Support.
All right, we've got motion and support. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, if you could please call the roll.
Cabo Watten?
Yes.
Hornbeck?
Yes.
Prueji?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Rezepa?
Yes.
Von Kruks?
Yes.
Benedetti?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mayor Rezepa.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Sure.
We'll keep it with you, actually, for disbursements and statements and reports.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Move to approve the authorized disbursements, April 15th, 2024, in the amount of $1,174,766.81.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered.
Move, receive, and place on file the financial summary, March 31st, 2024, schedule of investments and cash on hand, March 31st, 2024, City Beautiful Commission Minutes, March 6th, 2024, Downtown Development Authority Minutes, January 11th, 2024, and February 8th, 2024, Fire and Police Pension Board Minute, Draft Minutes, April 10th, 2024, Historical Commission Minutes, March 11th, 2024, Recreation Commission Minutes, January 30th, 2024, Traffic Safety Commission Minutes, March 6th, 2024, Fire Department Monthly Report, March 2024, and a Police Department Monthly Report, March 2024.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Thank you, Rick.
Sure. I felt like you.
Yeah, so we'll add some resolutions for you next time.
No, you're good.
All right, we'll go to other council business now. I don't have anything for us this evening, so we'll get started with council. And first up, we have Councilman Cabo Watten.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. I'll make this short. Just want to remind everyone, this week is National Work Zone Safety Awareness Week. For those of you that are out on the roads, whether it's, you know, primarily construction zones, but it really, it really applies across the board, whether it's our public services department, or public safety officers, even tow truck drivers, et cetera. You know, when you have, when you see the lights on, on the vehicles, or the work zones are established, just make sure that you give them plenty of room, slow down. The few seconds that you might save yourself or cost yourself as far as slowing down and costing yourself a little bit of time is, really makes the difference between being safe in the work zone and not, and not. So just want to make some awareness about that, and again, you know, just give our folks that are out on the roads some space and some room to work, and be safe so we can all go home to our families. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Rodriguez.
I do not have anything this evening, Mayor. Thank you.
All righty, Councilwoman Von Kruks?
Yes, I have nothing tonight either. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Benedetti?
Well, you're not as lucky. I know we could have commented earlier, but I saved it to the end so I could stretch it out. We voted tonight for the proposal, or the charter, for the new buildings. I hope that people will understand that this is something that's long overdue, and if they have questions, please reach out to any of us here. We can explain it to you. This is something that should have been done years ago. It was tried once. In the 30-some years I've been in this city, and it failed, and then no one ever tried again. But I can tell you, after being in, the buildings that the police and firemen are in, the buildings that DPW are in, they really need some improvements. They need new buildings. They are falling apart, and we would not expect a resident to let their house do these things, or not take care of them, and we have to take care of our buildings. That's it.
Thank you very much, Councilman. Appreciate that. Councilwoman Hornbeck?
No, nothing tonight.
And Councilman Prueji?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to tag on to Rick's statement is, I look at it, besides what he has mentioned, that it also, and quite frankly, is a safety issue, both to the teams, the city employees that work there, as well as residents that would be visiting those facilities. So besides what he has mentioned, I also think is a safety issue. Next item is, I just want to thank, thank Chief and his staff for some issues that were happening that, from my current job position, and they jumped on it, and I just want to say thank you. And outside of that, that's all I have. Thank you.
Good. Thank you, Councilman. All right, we'll go to our other elected officials. Madam Clerk, do you have anything?
I'll just remind everybody, our next meeting is Monday, May 6th, and we will and we will have the public hearing regarding the budget beforehand at 6:30 p. or 6:30 p.m., and the regular meeting at 7:00.
Thank you very much. Uh, recesser. Ms. Brennan, do you have anything?
Oh, nothing tonight.
All right, our treasurer, Mr. McCullough.
No.
Ooh, hat pick there, all right.
You feeling okay, Mike?
Just wanted to see your smiling face.
That's what we're here for, right? Oh, yeah, up here. So we'll have, uh, any of our department's heads want to get up and speak, too? No pressure, but we'll also just give a shout out. We'll make you get up to speak, but our new DDA director is here, um, for those that didn't meet her at the last meeting, too, uh, Angela Pousineau. So excited to have her on board, and, uh, excited for everyone watching at home, uh, to get to interact with her over the coming months and years, too. So we'll make you get up and do a whole long spiel one of these days, so. Ah, perfect. Uh, any other department heads have anything? We'll go to public comment then. Anyone wishing to speak, I see beginning with your name and address, direct all questions through me, and please limit your comments to five minutes. Seeing none, and none on Zoom, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved and supported. It's 7:23 for adjournment. See you all in a couple of weeks.